Cockroaches are still in here.
So you have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. I'm on favor.
All right.
Any opposed? Carry it to order.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on. I have a two, Mayor Roberts, and discussion for possible action, approval of real property license agreement for e- ingress and egress between the city of Ely, Nevada and Kobe Bliss. As I understand, we should have a copy of that here. Are there any questions or anything to read ahead?
This is a simple license agreement. I know the party's been terminated at any time. It's just to allow him access through city property to gain access to his property. And I guess he will be installing a gate on the far end of the center. But I don't think that would be considered city property, and if anything, it adds adds to it, so.
All in favor of the motion?
Oh.
Motion from Councilman Allwirth. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman William Harper. No further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carry it to order. I approve, Mayor Roberts, and discussion for possible action, retroactive approval of support letter for the Nevada Governor's Office of Science Innovation and Technology Office. Application for a National Federal Communications and Information Administration, PIA, middle mile grant. Brian Mitchell contacted my office about this. They had a deadline, so we stand out because we wouldn't let the deadline be waited for. And this is retroactive approval of the letter. Keep your brother, Brian Mitchell. All in favor of motion or questions? Motion from Councilman Spear. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman William Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Carry it to order. I implore Mayor Roberts, and discussion for possible act- possible action acceptance of Bill Wolf's resignation from the city tree board effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. You got a copy of his email there, short and sweet. We certainly appreciate your service, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Any questions or motion?
I'd like to make a comment that, you know, I think that Bill has done fantastic job on that to employ the main state for that entire organization for a long, long time. I'm sad to see you go. I guess I could say, you know, I accept your resignation. I don't think that's proper either, so. And this time I'd like to help you.
I have a comment, too. Bill's knowledge on trees is invaluable. So I hope you give some feedback or input if you see the board going a little bit of different direction, like what to plant Russian olive trees or olive trees, you know, that you would interject. But so don't let the knowledge you have be wasted for setting us in the wrong direction. So we appreciate if you see something or come in with some comment, get hold of the council person, and just talk about it. We'll take some.
Thank you. So I have a motion from Councilman Spear. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Harper. No further discussion?
Have you worked with Bill several times? And if you take one of the things that I very proud to see when I drive down the street by the museum is the flowers along the fence line and whatnot, that move every street in somewhere. And these four are responsible for jewelry. And I commend, I would say, thank you, Bill, and those fantastic people who have worked together a couple of times trying to do other jobs, but they did not successfully.
Well, I do have to mention, Bill Wolf, I do have to mention that this year Judy and I did give up that project for me. You can't get out and do the weeding and stuff anymore. So credit for this year has to go to somebody else. In the past, we enjoyed doing it, and it was always a labor of love.
You're getting to a few.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All right.
Carry it to order. Item five, Councilman Carson, White Mountain County, Rosover, California, discussion for possible action approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash ten to ratify the approval of the Ely Renaissance Society mural selection committee for replacement of a new mural on twelve forty East Alton Street. And I believe you have that in the package here. Are there any questions or?
I just want to say there was a slight correction that was passed out during the meeting. It was just on the first, whereas I believe the original said chapter seven, and the correction is that it's chapter eleven. Is where the the authority comes from.
Okay. If there are any questions or comments?
I guess I got a little bit of. Yeah, I look at this, and a mural is one thing, but I believe that this is nothing more than a billboard supporting and advocating our business. Sunset Rain's on there. I don't think that's legal to use taxpayers' funds on a billboard. Everything about this says that you're hurting that private business sign on the side of that business. It's Sunset Rain. It's different than any other business in town. We should be doing for all of them. No, this is against, I think against a lot of people that on NRS that you can't just public funds to promote a private business. On their business. I think this is, I like the murals of government, but this, to me, is nothing more than a billboard promoting a business. I'll be against it.
My comments are the word Renaissance. I don't see how this modern mural ties in with Renaissance. To me, the Renaissance is right up there. The murals we currently have, you know, about the history of our community. That's my comment on it, you know. And I just wondered, too, like Ed said, you know, over there by the old Gilmore gas station, there was that cattle truck that had all kinds of appetizing on it. And I believe the state said, no, you can put free parking. That's the only one show on there. I don't think you can advertise a business unless you're licensed to go for it. A little feedback on my comment.
No, absolutely. And Kyle Warbuck, for the record, I appreciate that comment, Councilman Spear. That was, what was proposed was what was worked back and forth between Bill Noah and Kim, which we had worked on for about two years. There was a couple ideas that just went nowhere, and so we've been working on this for a little while. I understand the comment, and I agree. I would be willing to go back and work that out. That was the council's that was the council's wish, you know, because I do understand where you're coming from with that one. Originally, it just said Ely, Nevada, and then through the artist and the owners of the building working it out, that was that was the proposal that came back to it. So I don't think anything's going to be hurt if we go back to maybe it's something that that everybody's comfortable with. With a comment from Councilman Allwirth. So with you talking with Virginia, I know this doesn't have exactly, you know, the in-your-face cultural theme that all the other ones in the downtown are. But according to Virginia, this is outside of the downtown, and we're not restricted to just having cultural murals outside of that. In fact, the bowling alley is significantly out of the downtown. So our thought was, you know, this is a part of town. It certainly needs some color. You know, a facade improvement would go a long way during that part. So don't want all public art to just be focused in the downtown. Eventually, it would almost look a bit of a cluttered, almost take away from the art that's already there. So expanding the art inventory out of that, you know, it, Virginia's area is comfortable or was comfortable with that. But I do understand what you're talking about. I certainly don't want to get in trouble and do anything that, you know, is not on the up and up, you know. So full disclosure, this was the idea that was worked on between the artists and the owners of the building. And so that's what's been brought to you, and we certainly could come back and do another, do another proposals there. Do you have any ideas? And what could be a solution? So the design of it with the flying saucers and the crystals and the black hole, we said, can you kind of make it black light bowling, but can you kind of have a feel about sci-fi? Because the film festival was going on at the time, and they played that movie, the sci-fi movie from the fifties, Martians from Space or whatever, and they had a big scene in Liam and Caves. And so that was, that was kind of the conversation that kind of came to be on how the design that it currently is.
Can I, can I ask how, what is the funding source? Is it just the tour market?
Uh, it's from the, it's from the public art line item. We haven't.
Tour markets.
So no part of this has been paid for by Sunset Rain at all?
All right.
It's not being supported by the White Mountain County Fair Recreation Board?
Tourism.
It's from the, yes, it's from our public art line.
That's property, that's public tax.
Yep, yep, totally.
And you're, that kind of money can't be used for one during an individualized activity.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, you have something to add.
I would agree with both my council members. I feel like a new person for one particular business. I mean, he doesn't scream anything else but
Bowling alley.
Yeah, but bowling alley. Bowling ball, bowling pins, and that's what you see before. I don't think everybody's going to understand the whole story that you just went through. It just looks like.
You should have seen what it started out as.
It does look like an endorsement of the bowling alley, so.
Well, it certainly is good feedback to take back to the owners of the bowling alley, you know, because like I said, it was driven by those conversations. And so I can very easily go back and be like, here were the concerns of the city council, and can we modify it? And if you have any ideas of how we could maybe not do a complete overhaul, the ways that, you know, we could make it acceptable to all of them, I'd.
You're trying to highlight the whole area that way. So do we have other business people from that end sitting and having input with this?
Nope, just because it was, like I said, it was two years ago that the bowling alley was identified as a location, and that's how we started the conversation.
I think it might be good to ask some of those other business owners, and maybe you could come up with something that highlights more things on that end of town rather than just cockroach this.
We could do some very creative cockroaches. That's my first.
Let's not, let's not.
No.
Because on the Cal Rand building, you know, that is historical of family on there, you know, so that's part, I feel, part of Renaissance.
Yeah, sorry, ethnic roots.
Ethnic, okay, yeah. So, but I look at, you know, I we really promote our dark skies. You know, I can sort of see something, a nice bull moon and morning star, you know, dark sky reflection like that, you know. Look at our dark skies, probably tourism, coming to our area, the little stars and paint a lot of the lights that are brilliant. You know, falling stars, something like that, but this is an idea.
Cool. Yeah, no, I'm putting all ideas, so. Like I said, this is just, this is what's come out of the last two years, and we wanted to move something forward. So I appreciate the feedback, and I'll come back with others on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leo, is going to do a, just a no action on this, or does it need to be?
I have a question.
A table?
Yeah.
Motion to quash from Councilman Spear. Do I have a second? Also, I have a second from Councilman Allwirth. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Item six, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, approved release request for qualifications for engineering services or renew the city be its contract with base of engineering.
I make a motion to renew the contract with base of engineering.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
The reason I make that motion is we are so involved in what we've had going on the last many years, five years, that we cannot allow ourselves to stumble. And if you move it forward, you know, we've got going for the group, NDOT, all these other projects, CBBG. We've got a group of people working out there, and if Cameron was on the internet or on Zoom, he would vouch how quick we're going to get answers back to them to help us get these unbelievable funding we have coming on behalf of efforts of the corporate group and DJ's backroom support. So I, the question I don't know is, it's not mentioned in here, you know, I'm sure the contract ends, is there a automatic increase in this contract?
Would this be a proposal? He'd have to bring back his proposal for renewal or would that?
Let's see. I, the contract has been terminated, of course, ended a month. But we would need to bring back a renewed contract to the paddocks.
So that would have to be the next meeting?
The next meeting, yeah. We still have about probably a couple of weeks. But this item needed to be on shortly before.
So the motion is to renew the contract with base of engineering? For clarity, that would be coming back for review of the council and for approval. That the next thing, that the next meeting? So I have a motion from the council.
Okay, this one.
Yeah.
Addition, let me ask the treasurer. In the budget, I'm not asking for any amount, is there a budget increase since we knew the contract was ending this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll need a second before we move on.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, your question I have is under the, our orders is that city engineer is basically term runs continuous with the mayor because that's a, that's a exempt employee. So I think if you, the reason, I couldn't see anywhere, and I do all that ordinance stuff, that maybe your contract should be expired the same time as the seat of mayor, because that is an exempt employee that the mayor.
So there is a distinction there. There, he is not considered an employee. He's a contractor.
They just hit him on my orders, like, that's like this.
Well, we didn't hire, we didn't hire DJ, we hired Basin.
Right.
That's who the contract.
So if we were to hire a city engineer as an employee to work for the city, that's where the code is invoked?
There was some conversation, as I recall, just after we got seated, though, is how often that came up. Because if the new council comes on and wants to do something different, there was a, did we do three years this last time, DJ?
I think you should have terminated the seat of mayor.
And it's in, and I, gosh, I'm digging way far back. By way far back, I mean anything passed last weekend. But the contract has, I mean, termination clauses between DJ and the city are not required to stay there. Because if the council wanted to do something else, it's still open.
But we don't really have to go out for bid for professional services.
I mean, if the council, if the new council came on and decided, no, we want to hire somebody.
Termination clause.
Yeah. So. So I have a motion, and I have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Carry it to order. Item seven, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, direct city attorney to revise Ely city code to add for chapter two, garbage and refuse to incorporate current policy and practices and make other necessary changes throughout.
And to address George's comment, there's nothing to even include for this. This is simply, I would go back and amend the code to include current fees that are being assessed and being right now for specific patterns.
And then bring that back for the council to review.
Correctly, we're, so these are already practices that are being added at the landfill. There's really nothing new, and there's nothing to attach.
Direction would proceed differently. I'll make that motion.
Motion from Councilman Spear. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Flonius. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Carry it to order. Item. Eight, Councilman Spear, Councilman Allwirth, discussion only, update on corporate records on the city be whose behalf to secure federal and state funding.
I'll see the version of the status.
Step two.
I'm telling the election, there's not going to be much action.
I'll be out.
Thank you.
Tell the news.
Item nine, Councilman Allwirth, human resource director, trust, city attorney, can, discussion for possible action, presentation of the plan to transition the public works supervisor position to a public works director position with possible direction to initiate said transition.
Mr. Allwirth?
Yes.
Before we start, the city HR director just walked up there with stacked papers. I had inquired about anything that back of it we could study prior to this meeting. And she said, I'm going to read to you what we want to do.
Now, I can say I agree with you.
This position, this position, this position, they're going to go forward with the city forever, you know, a long time. So I feel, I personally cannot get an educated discussion out of somebody telling me something. I mean, we can go through this here. But again, I feel I'm just going to have to sit and listen, because my nature is to, as I worded it, maul this over, look at it, ask questions. This meeting will continue on for quite a while tonight. If I'm not going to be able to ask questions, I'm going to have to go back to, go back to the first thing you said, go back to the fourth thing you said. I'm sitting here willing to listen what her and the attorney have to say, but I think this is an important thing going right here. So that's all I'm saying. She's got something up there, she's going to read to us. We need to have the same thing in front of us.
I have a bunch of papers. What I did, in case nobody had it, was the ordinance about the public works. I got the agenda item that created this whole thing.
Does the council have your ordinance?
I thought you called us.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not an ordinance, it's the code that's available to the public and the council. And really, I don't think a written report was necessary, because there's really nothing that needs to be changed in the code. The only thing that, if we wanted to transition this position, is that currently Mike is also, if you look under one dash sixteen dash five under duties, subsection A, the second sentence there allows for the director of public works, or allows for city council to, at their discretion, have the director of public works also oversee parks and maintenance and the cemetery. What Mike is currently doing is he's also supervising animal control. So that's the only thing that would potentially be added in there, is that as a supervisory role for animal control. And, I mean, the code already provides for this position, it provides for parks and maintenance director and for the cemetery system. So really, that's.
Okay, my, a point on, a question I read, that I sent an email. You guys need to read this. The rest of the council should read this. First of all, we do not have a job description for a public works supervisor, correct?
No, but we already have somebody in that place.
But that's not the question. The question, how can we compare apples and apples? We're not comparing it. We don't, we got, we got one point change that even be around control. I understand that, but.
If you hadn't have allowed me to give this to you.
Okay, I think it's going to fall on Ted here. How can we make a decision if we don't have an idea what you're going to talk about?
Councilman Allwirth. None of the employees are under the code. It's only appointed officials that are contained in the code. So the only positions with job duties under the code are city attorney, treasurer, HR director, public works director, these positions. We don't have a position, like you said, for public works supervisor. Is there any?
Why do you demand it like the bargaining unit we don't?
Is there any, is there any employee, union employees that we have job descriptions for currently?
We have unions.
Okay, but since Mike, since the supervisor position currently isn't in the union, and he's an appointed position, we just don't have any.
It's my understanding when I asked about it, because I looked to see if they had one, was when this was created by the council at that time, they offered it to Mike without creating a job description. So that's why we interviewed Mike about what he did and compared it to what was in the ordinance. So basically, our report back was that at this point, there is no issue that we see that the, according to the agenda item that we were given to do this, to see about transitioning the public works supervisor's position to the public works director's position, whereas he meets all the minimum requirements outlined in the ordinance. We didn't see any issue. Then what we brought up, other than supervising the animal control officer, which he does now, that might be needed, considered to be added to the ordinance.
As we recall, that when Chuck Hodges was here, they had put the animal super, the supervision of the animal control officer under the city attorney for some reason.
Yes.
That's not in our code somewhere.
No.
I didn't know why they did that anyway.
He does that because of legal issues. When I sat during that meeting, it was legal. You know, he's going out, being issued citations and so forth.
So for the council's benefit here, I'd like to just point out that there, tonight, I mean, there is a lot of information to go through. A perfectly good option is if they need more time or would like some additional information, is to ask for that information and table this in for another meeting if they like. If they like it in some certain format, that needs to be noted, I think.
Well, this is short and sweet. There was only one other item that I, that I came up with, so if you would like to hear that, is that I would recommend that if we decide to transition this over, is to create a position under the union for a park cemetery lead person. Because at this point, we had already kind of talked about asking next year about a position in that, because his position as it is now, and especially if it becomes an appointed position, cannot be, we could have a possible grievance from the union.
Because you can't work.
Because it can't be out more than the law.
Absolutely.
I think right now with this, number one, I believe this should happen, but not until twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
And that was my other question was, is it, if we could wait to get again the budget, because we're going to, of course, go through the union initiation, we're not going to say no, add an decision. I don't see that as a problem. But with everything else going on this year, I would prefer to wait to get it in the budget and work right in the home position.
So and just so that we're using the correct terminology here, the position is already in the code. What would we?
Except for, I don't know.
Super, where art supervisor is not anywhere.
No, it's the public works director that's already in it, that pretty much mirrors everything that he's doing now.
But the public works supervisor position as it is now would go away.
Yes, that, I don't see any reason to have both, because now you've got two positions that I'm looking at supervising the same group of people.
And that, excuse me, that's the exact thing what I tried to tell you guys in an email. You already got the person doing the job. Write a job description for that, because I feel there's some issues in there that not qualifying, because we're looking to the future again. So my quiz goes wherever. You're going to hire somebody using this job description, you're going to be looking for somebody that's got that coordinates, whatever his qualification, qualification, education, state licensing, experience, possession, background, degree, associated credit, blah, 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 or five years of public work administration. That right there, this is, again, it's going to the future. You know, we have done that with your position and Jennifer's position. That's why we're throwing out the big money to bring qualified people in. I'm not saying he's not qualified, but you're going to take a person that's been a public works supervisor, boom, you're going to drop him in here, and then we need to really look.
No, that would be up to the council's decision if they want to put him in there.
But this is part of your job as an HR director to guide us through this. They're saying, you're just saying this is our decision, like, it's your guys' decision.
I am trying to guide you, but you keep cameraing me on this. He has five years of public, uh, uh, work.
Just to be clear, before we get further down this road, the discussion tonight is not whether or not we're putting in a position, it's how we are structuring this is the discussion tonight, right?
It was saying, we were asked, could we transition this position over? And from everything that we looked at.
And by transition, I think the understanding is that the supervisor position goes away.
Yes.
And we have this, and you're suggesting, your recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we do that to appease the union, to make sure that this person is not doing work that they shouldn't be doing, we do a lead person, we add a lead person position for parks and.
Cemetery, correct.
Is that, did I catch that?
That was the gist of everything that was asked of us. I felt out of that agenda item, nowhere in that agenda item was I asked to come up with job descriptions.
So the next, so that, that's one issue. If the council decides that that's how they want to transition, then the second issue would be who applies, and, you know, if they need to make some additions, for example, the animal control thing, or other changes to qualifications, and how they want to do that, I guess.
Because you have two options. You can transition Mike over if that's your desire, or you can advertise for it, and he can apply for it, like Jennifer did, for the city parks position.
I'm still a little bit confused there. They are very contrasting. But I've seen it, and I totally understand that you're trying to move the transition. Transition tells me that we're going to move on this. And then Mike's moved supervisor to director. Oh, I'm going to go back, but I think that that should wait, and you all will have a budget.
You can apply.
And you go forward, but they're going to have to force you to.
So I guess that, that would be the third issue is one.
Yes, that's right.
The thing is, if the first issue, if the first issue is that that position goes away, the supervisor position, and we go with a director position, we have an employee that we have to decide what we're going to do with, and does he have to apply, or are we going to automatically transition this? So that's a separate issue. I want to make sure that we're talking about one thing at a time here, so that we're not conflating with other concerns.
History on transitioning. Basically.